Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. It is noon, and that means we are beginning lunch with lawmakers. I hope you're like me, and you have your lunch over to the side, and you're going to listen to a great conversation with the two candidates who are running for Beaufort County Council. You know, back several months ago, Mike Covert decided with other plans, decided to not run for reelection for Beaufort County District 7. And with that said, a couple of really great thoughtful candidates have stepped forward to run for that seat. So today, we look forward to hearing from them, and I think you're going to love what they have to say. Just a couple of notes. This is being streamed live right now over Facebook. So if you want to click on the Chamber's Facebook page and share that so that this conversation gets out to even more people, so that we have even more informed voters. We also, this past week, on our election page, we have what are called 60-second solutions that can lead you through some of the questions you may have for Election Day, such as, you know, how do you find your polling place? Or where is my sample ballot? What does that look like? So do please take a second and look at our elections page on the Chamber's website. This is the first of seven candidate forums that we have coming up. And so thankful that our candidates who are running for local office have carved out time to be able to meet with us and to hear about the issues. You know, interestingly enough, several weeks ago, we sent out a poll to our members and asked them what were the topics that were most important to them, what they wanted to hear about. And the results of this conversation are those issues ranked in importance. So we're not going off script here with any rogue topic that's just important to the Chamber. We really, like I said, put it out there to our membership and to the community to tell us what you wanted to hear from the candidates. So they did receive, in full disclosure, did receive those topics and issues in advance. And during all of the forums, they will receive those issues and again, topics, but the actual questions were not scripted and given in advance. That will not happen for any of these coming up. So like I said, we have seven of these coming up. And Kelly, do you have a slide? She might be still trying to work in the background to pull up the Facebook and get that going. We had a slide that was going to show you what all of the races were coming up. If not, we can certainly promote that at the end of this. This particular conversation lasts about, there we go. All right. Thanks, Kelly. I appreciate it. She's in the background working on a lot of technical things. So again, it should be shared down on Facebook Live. Here is a calendar of events coming up for these every Tuesday. Again, seven weeks, noon on Tuesday, coming up this next week. Bill Herb Kersman and Mitch Siegel. The following Tuesday, we have that House District seat 123 for here on Hilton Head, the Senate District with Tom Davis and Nathan Campbell, the Hilton Head Island Town Council seats. That is going to be the only debate forum that's going to be one hour in length. There are three seats, three wards that are going to be represented, and each one of those will have 20 minutes of that hour to speak. Hope you'll join us for the entire hour, though. And then you see on the 20th, a one-on-one conversation with Representative Nancy Mace. And then on the 27th, a one-on-one conversation with Congressman Joe Cunningham. Again, if you signed up for one of those, you'll be signed up for this speaker series throughout the Tuesdays for the coming weeks. So again, just mark your calendar and make time for those. One other thing I want to mention is that we have a chat box there on the bottom of your screen. We do hope that you will continue to, even though we're not taking questions from the audience in this particular forum, we do want the conversation to be virtual. The candidates are very much so, more than likely watching, and are going to be monitoring that chat box and would certainly want to know your comments as they are speaking. Because of their schedules, I should mention, we pre-recorded this conversation just a few days ago. And without further ado, Logan Cunningham and Jody Strudick. Thank you all so much for joining us as we hear now from the candidates, two thoughtful candidates who are putting their hats in the ring for Beaufort County Council. And Logan Cunningham and Jody Strudick, both running for the seat that is being vacated by Mike Covert, deciding not to run for reelection. And we thank these two candidates for vying for public office and wanting to reshape Beaufort County and put their experience into play in that area of Bluffton. Going alphabetically, we'll begin with Logan Cunningham. And Logan, for the next minute, tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're from, and why you decided to run for office.
Absolutely. Thanks, Hannah. Before I talk about why I'm running for county council, I think we need to talk about what got me to this point to begin with. I moved to South Carolina when I was eight years old. The way life unfolded, it kind of had me grow up at an early age. My mother passed away when I was young. And here in Beaufort County, I was raised by my single father. While he was busy running his practice on Hilton Head, I was in charge of the responsibilities at the House and helping raise my little sister. After graduating from high school at Hilton Head Christian Academy, I enrolled at USCV, right here in Beaufort County, where I went on to get my degree in elementary education. I chose education because I wanted to get in some type of field that I could give back to the community and make some type of positive impact of the individuals around me, whether it was students, faculty, parents, staff, whatever it might be. After graduation, I accepted a job at Hilton Head Creative Arts, which is actually the first school I attended when I moved here to South Carolina. After being in all forms of education here in Beaufort County for over 18 years, I decided it was time to leave the classroom inside those four walls and branch out to something else to make another impact on the county. That's sort of what led me to this path to run for county council today. I left my job. I went full-time at the part-time job I had while I was teaching so I could run my campaign with no interference. If you would have asked me 15 years ago if I would be in this point today of running for a political position or a leadership-type of position, I would have told you you're absolutely crazy. I was too busy 15 years ago, wondering if I was going to be the victim of my upbringing, or if I wanted to rise above and be a victor. I chose to rise above that. I chose to not let those things be an excuse or hold me down. I chose to work hard and get through those obstacles to get to where I am today. So here I am today, ready to advocate and fight for the things I fought side inside the classroom, and now I'm ready to bring them to the outside of the classroom, whether that's from education, transparency, growth, whatever it might be. It's a battle that I'm not afraid of.
Logan, thank you for that kind introduction. Jody, tell me about yourself, your family, where you're from, and why you decided to run.
Sure. Actually, it was interesting, Logan, listening to your story. So I think we have a few things in common. And one of those being, you know, overcoming a hardship and sort of having that be driving force for your future endeavors. So for myself, I moved to Beaufort County in 2003, right out of college. And I set down roots in Bluffton in 2005. I bought a home here, right along the Buckwalter corridor, and started a family. Had a job that I loved. I was in retail management, had two little kids. And when my youngest was a newborn, she was diagnosed with a very serious illness. And I had to leave that profession that I loved to take care of her full-time. You know, it was a very difficult decision. And in that time, you know, I learned a lot about myself and how to manage a crisis and manage a situation when things get turned upside down and your plan doesn't always work out the way you anticipate. Through the time that we were together at home, she went on to thrive, and she's doing much better now. And in that time, I became active in the schools. I noticed that we had a massive overcrowding problem here in Bluffton as I started to research that and understand it better and try to figure out how we could come together as a community and solve this issue. I realized that it was a lot more than just overcrowded classrooms. You know, all of the issues that we were facing were related to growth management, to our tax structure here in South Carolina. And so that issue evolved over time. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm running for county council. I think we have a real opportunity now, especially it's a census year. We're going to have a lot more data at our fingertips going forward to really understand, you know, who's living here in Beaufort County, how the area has changed over the last 10 years, and really set a vision for the future. So I'm excited and looking forward to it.
Jody, thank you for mentioning the census as well. That is something that we'd like to remind everybody that's listening and watching today, that make sure that you filled out your census form, your census information. It is so incredibly vital that we have that information. Thank you for mentioning that. So prior to this conversation, you all received issues that our membership at the Chamber were particularly interested in. So you've received that in advance, even though the questions are not scripted. You do know the topics that we're going to cover, and those were in rank and file of what was most important. So Logan, you began with the welcome. So we'll just ping pong back and forth. Jody, if you would take the first issue. And our membership said that that 278 corridor was incredibly important. Tell me your thoughts about the 278 corridor issue. Have you been following that and the role of the county? And perhaps where you would, what you would like to see happen with that particular, really important piece of economic development for the county?
Yes, definitely. Well, I have been following it. And especially, you know, now we're kind of at a critical juncture. They've done a lot of the, you know, plans. They've done a few community meetings so far. And they're about to give us their primary reasonable alternative plan. So we're looking forward to that this fall. And that should be basically the one that they end up going with. So, you know, one of the things that struck me in the most recent meeting that, when they were discussing with the town of Hilton Head, was that all of their reasonable alternative plans, so these are the plans that they've narrowed down, are going to have impacts on Pinky Island. They're going to have impacts on the environment, on the wetlands, on, you know, the shellfish community there, all of our native island communities. All of these things are going to be impacted by this. So I think it's very important that we're careful that we have as few impacts as possible. One of the things that I also noticed about that meeting that struck me was that even though we know we need to repair the bridges, the other piece was to minimize the traffic impact. And they still rated the traffic impacts as a D as their goal, which is basically the threshold in a major metropolitan area. So I think there's still a little bit more work to do. Personally, I would like to see, you know, a little bit more conversation about a robust public transportation option to maybe also minimize some of the traffic that we're having. A six-lane highway, you know, will definitely get things moving faster. But is that really what we want in our community? So definitely a lot to look forward to.
Logan, your thoughts on the 278 corridor?
Absolutely. It is something I've been following really close. And I've been meeting with different people, whether it's Bill Herb Kersman talking about some of the ideas. I don't know if you guys saw one of the plans that Jeff Bradley had an architect sketch up with the bridge that we have currently. Jody was talking about the impacts that could have on the environment, which I 100% agree. South Carolina and Beaufort County have done a great job of preserving our coastlines. We need to make sure that we do that moving forward. But they've talked about turning the bridge that we currently have into some type of park that we can, one, get back to exercise, get outside, and not let that structure go to waste that we've already had our tax dollars go towards. I know some of the different ideas also with that bridge also are going to correlate with Exit 3. That's going to be opening up shortly when that Jasper port comes up. These are a lot of things that we start considering when we talk about these roads. That port's going to happen. A lot of those people are going to want to come live in Beaufort County. They're going to want our school systems. They're going to want our job industry when they go to those other jobs outside, whether the husband works here or the wife works in Jasper, whatever it might be. So when we start talking about these roads, we have to think for that future, whether that is extending the Bluffton Parkway. I know we focus on 278. But there are other options that we can focus on instead of expanding that wider. From the last drawing I saw, Spanish Wells is about where the new bridge will land. I think we need to make sure that we have the conversations with those people on Hilton Head when it comes to voting to see what they would like to see in their backyard. I know a lot of people have invested in their property years ago before a new bridge was ever talked about. It's no different than Island West. I've been in touch with them about the golf course over there they have. When you have the, sorry, the regroup trying to buy up the land right there in 278 to put shopping complexes and stuff in there. There's got to be some negotiations and some giveaway when we talk about all of these roads and the things that are building. Because Jody's right, we want to preserve our low country values. We want to preserve that feel. I don't want a six-lane highway. I don't want this to look like Myrtle Beach. I don't want this to be overcrowded. So we got to figure out ways where we can flow this traffic in the right direction so people can get from point A to point B without getting caught into it. Not everybody's going to Hilton Head. So not all roads have to directly line up to 278 to get to Hilton Head. I think we need to start looking at expanding that Bluffton Parkway in different places as well.
Thank you all both for that great, great insight. Jody, you have something you want to add?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I would like to touch on that. So yes, I mean, I do think, you know, the whole county is growing. And Logan is correct. We need to have a strategic vision for the entire county. With this specific project, though, we know that the McCay Bridge does need to be replaced. And so if we're going to be investing in that section, it does make sense to consider where the bottlenecks are before and after from the Moss Creek to the Spanish Wells area. I did see Mr. Bradley's plan or proposal suggestion about the park on the existing bridge. It's an intriguing idea. I do think that we would really need to look very, very carefully at the environmental impact of keeping that there, like what the footprint is when we consider the existing bridge and the bidirectional, you know, east-west additional bridges as well. It may be that it's not advantageous to us in terms of the environment to leave the existing bridge. So those are all questions that we have. And I think when we're looking at an investment of 250 upwards of $350 million, you know, this is not the type of thing to rush into. So it'll be very interesting to see when this new plan comes back, when they finalize their final reasonable alternative plan, the one that they'd like to put forward for a community input. I think we're all going to be watching that very, very carefully.
Logan, any additional comments?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things about 278, a lot of people don't realize, I didn't even realize until I started doing a lot of research. A lot of our roads fall in state, county, and town. You have to negotiate with all three to get something done, whether that is talking to Tom Davis, Bill Herb Kersman, Jeff Bradley, all those other elected officials at the state level. Those are communications that I've already made, discussions I've already had, plans that they're moving forward. Jody is right, there could be an impact if we have both bridges up. But there also could be a major impact on that marshland removing that bridge as well. So it's a little give and take. We're going to have to figure out which way to go about this and what's best for the community to make this still the destination that people want to come to.
And make sure that your constituents in Bluffton can perhaps get to work on Hilton Head like I know that you all have to do many, many times. And that there's a lot of lost time, a lot of lost productivity sitting in traffic there in the morning. So I know that that comes into play as well for our local residents. I also, I sit on the 278 Committee for the town. And so again, I appreciate your thoughtfulness so much about this topic and what the role that you all would have on Beaufort County Council. So thank you for your thoughtfulness on that particular topic. Our next one, and Logan will begin with you on this particular topic, is workforce housing. You know, we all are in somewhat the same age group and, you know, came here in professions where we could not afford likely the median house value that is on Hilton Head or Bluffton. And so we were challenged, I suspect, with finding, as we've grown our careers. What are your ideas, Logan? And, you know, the challenges and opportunities in workforce housing? And what would you do if sitting on county council to make workforce housing more affordable?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. It is something that I've had to deal with personally. Yes, growing up here, you know, I started off. But even still, when I got out of college, you know, it was renting rooms, renting apartments, then renting a house until you finally own a house. You know, you got to climb that ladder. And then even getting into that threshold is difficult. I had to work two jobs to do it while I was teaching. I was working another one to make sure that I could even qualify for it. You know, one of the things that scares me that we're talking about in Beaufort County that is going to impact this workforce housing. Our sales tax continues to climb, which takes more money out of the people's pockets. And now we're discussing adding more impact fees, which ultimately is going to hurt lower-income families more than anybody else. The moment you start adding impact fees, those are those people that are moving here, that are just building. And a lot of them that are looking to move from one house to another house to better their lives, when you tack that on, the builders are going to tack that right onto the consumer. I mean, that's just going to be simple economics and business. So my idea behind it was, I'm not for raising the taxes. I'm not for the impact fees. But we need to find a location, start working with everybody else in Beaufort County, whether it's Oakidy out on 170. We need to find an area to create affordable housing. I know a lot of people want to talk about transportation and transporting people in here. I get that. But it's also lost tax revenue that we could have. So without even raising the tax revenue, we could get it if the people are living in this county, not paying rent, but owning. So one that betters their life because they're making an investment for themselves, not throwing money away to somebody else that's renting out properties or apartments. And secondly, that's a stepping stone. You know, one of the great things about America is you get to start to work your way up to get to where you want to be. So I have started meeting with different people and talk about different locations where we could come up with an idea. You guys are both familiar with this area. Jody, I know you've been here for a while. Hannah, I'm not sure how long you've been here. But if you guys are familiar with the area behind Home Depot, it's called Sawmill Forest. They created that at the beginning of 2000s. And it's a community, two three-bedroom homes. Started out 120s, 150s, and then they got to about the 170s. That's the entry-level type of home of people that I employ. You know, I have right now, I think we're down to 37 employees. That's the type of homes that they're trying to get right now. They're trying to get back on their feet. Or they're trying to better their lives, and they're stuck renting because there's nothing they can afford. I deal with on a day-to-day basis of whether it's one of my servers worried about making rent when they could be investing in themselves when rent is not controlled by them and rent continues to climb. So I think it's something we need to find this land. I know that, I know the town has been given land before. The county's been given land before. And we need to find this opportunity to bring in the right builder and the right people to build this neighborhood for these people.
Jody, your thoughts on workforce housing?
Sure. This is actually a huge issue for me personally. You know, when I look around and I look at the way that this region has changed, this is one of the ways that I think that we've really left a lot of people behind. When we look at Beaufort County, we've got a median income right now of about $63,000 as a median household income. The county did a housing study in 2018, a very comprehensive study that looked at the demographics of the area, the economic balance of the area, you know, where industry is here, what types of jobs people have, who lives here. And they discovered that we have a huge gap for people who, you know, are at that $63,000 median income and lower to find housing that is in, you know, where they're, it's affordable for them. It's less than 30% of their income, their take-home pay. We have a large percentage of our renters that are at that 30%, and some are even at 50% of their take-home pay going directly to housing. And that's not sustainable, you know, especially when we have an economic downturn and maybe people have a scenario where they're off of work for a few weeks or a few months. You know, it really puts our entire community at a disadvantage. So we have been working on this issue for quite some time. I think there's promise now that we've started the Regional Housing Trust Fund. And that's going to be coming up again when they have the Soloco meeting soon. And that's going to be discussed. But I know the town of Bluffton has already contributed at. The county's contributing to that. And then some of our partners in Hampton, excuse me, Jasper County are contributing to that. So we're looking forward to getting funding to start some of these housing developments and things and really targeting that toward our workforce. Because it's not sustainable for us to have people who work here not live here. And Logan did make a good point, you know, that folks, if they're living in Jasper County or Hampton County, that's where they're spending their money on groceries and gas and all of those necessities instead of here in Beaufort County. So we want to bring folks in and be part of our community here in Beaufort County where they already work.
Again, thank you all so much. Another great topic and good insights. I appreciate that. It is something that our business community struggles with so much to not only attract talent, but, you know, once they are, they are offered a job, becomes the bigger question is where are they going to live? So as you all move through your campaigns, thank you again for continuing to come up with those really great ideas because you all are in the age group and likely in the income group as I am, where we really struggle with this particular issue. So thank you on that. Jody, the next topic comes to you, and it is a topic in your welcome. You mentioned that is so important to you, and that is that of education. Talk to me a little bit about what you think of how our education system is being run in Beaufort County, the allocation of funds, the interaction between council and the school board, and how you would perhaps impact that for the good and any changes that you would like to see made?
Sure. And I'll do my best to be brief, keep my eye on the time. This is an issue I could go on for hours about. It is, you know, I have spent years studying education here in Beaufort County, public education. I want to be very specific. I'm talking about public education, our public school system that accepts all students, no matter what their walk of life, no matter what their educational background is, socioeconomic background is. And so the role of county council when it comes to education is really quite limited. I mean, county council, their job is to set the mill rate. And that's done at the county level, and the council approves it. And then also to approve the operational budget for the school district. So a lot of the time, you'll hear people talk about, you know, wasteful spending in terms of the budget and those types of issues. But I really would encourage folks, if they're concerned about where those dollars are going in the operational budget, to go back and view the work session video where they go through the budget for the school system. And it takes, you know, an hour or more, line by line, item by item, exactly what we're spending money on. I have sat in meetings, listening in where they, where Board of Education members are literally deliberating between whether or not we can afford safe playground equipment, to improve safety equipment on the playgrounds versus critical instructional tools in the classroom. So, you know, when you're comparing those two things, I offer that we should be able to have both. So oftentimes, you know, we'll have the budget put forward, and people see the big number, $250 million or $200 million or $20 million, and they think, oh, my gosh, that's so much money. It is. And we need to be very careful with the money that we're using to spend it. But really take the time to go back and listen in on those conversations because you'll see. And then volunteer in a classroom and see how it plays out in a classroom with teacher, you know, now, here in 2020. It's not a cut-and-dry issue. So those are the main things that the county council, that's their main role. I would like to see going forward that we have representatives on the county council who have more experience with the school district and the school system and really understand how it works. Because when we're making decisions about, you know, where housing community is going to go, that's going to impact our school system. And sometimes these conversations are not happening at the same table. I have those relationships with members of the school board because I have followed this issue for so long. I have those relationships with people at the school district office because I follow this issue for so long. And then, of course, I'm just active in my community, and I volunteer in the schools and all of those other good things, too. So, sorry, I think I kept it under three minutes. I hope I did.
Logan, I know this is an issue that you two are extremely passionate about. Your thoughts about, Jody brought up some good points, about, Jody brought us some good points, that there's not a lot that the county and as an elected official, that interaction that you would have, but it is so incredibly important to our county that that is a very successful realm of what we do. Your thoughts about making education better or any changes?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad you pointed that out, that a lot of those roles are very limited. I do know that the last two budgets that the school board has presented have both been accepted by county council, including this year. It was all, it's going to be pushed through as well for them. This is what I will say. Being inside of the classroom and being outside the classroom, I've seen multiple different sides of it. I see the arguments for both sides. I've been inside the classroom and watched the wasteful spending. I've watched program after program get bought and then the money spent on training and then the program removed the very next year. I've watched textbooks that are bought for entire classrooms that never get used because it's not a part of the curriculum. I've watched books get bought or supplies be bought that never get used because they were never part of the plan. With that being said, currently, South Carolina ranks 22nd in spending as of 2018 in the country for education and continually rank in the 40s. Now, I know we're focusing on Beaufort County, and I think it's going to correlate back to part of that housing issue that we talked about. A lot of these teachers coming out of college for a fact, they're making about $32,000 after taxes, and then that doesn't include their health insurance and retirement. Paycheck coming out of college is about, coming out of, teaching your first year is about $900 every two weeks when it's all said and done. I've seen it. I lived it for years. When we talk about the budget, that is salaries, a lot of that money is going to come through our taxes. I know people are talking about adding impact fees as well, but I think we need to focus on building the relationship as county job. We have a school board that is elected by a community based on districts. They've put those people there in place to make these decisions, and I think it's our job to work with them to make sure that the job gets done. That's something I've been doing now. Rachel Wisnewski, who is District 7 School Board, right here where we live, the race that her and I are running for, I've been working closely with her. I've already had her endorsement for my campaign for county council. Those are the type of relationships that need to be built so we can mend those that have happened. We know we've made mistakes with our superintendent in the past. Now we have a new one and we need to set him up for success. One of the things that I came out in support with online was the referendum last, I came out in support with a lot of people within my party that did not agree with that, but I still came out and did it because I've seen it firsthand and I know that it was long overdue. Jody pushed for it as well. She had it on her page. I submitted something to her page myself on my Facebook as well. That's the route we need to go. This community is growing. The census is going to happen and we're going to see numbers that shock people. We have to look for the future to see what step we have to take. Where's this neighborhood need to go? We need to be building smart and planning actively for that.
Guys, those three issues were the ones that were ranked the most important with, with our members. But I would love in the few minutes that we have left, if we could ping pong between the two of you guys to take an issue yourself and kind of a lightning round, if you will, and just tell me your thoughts about it. And again, the opportunities and challenges and how you would try to reshape that in your role. Logan, we just finished with you, so the next one would be for you, and that is the issue of economic development.
I'm sorry, did, did you say you were going to Logan?
Something that you touched on earlier.
Go ahead, Logan. I'm sorry. I think we have a little bit of a technical delay there, but yeah, it would be, yeah, economic development.
Awesome. I think it's something that you even talked about yourself, Hannah. One of the big problems we have is we spend a lot of money on our education, public, college, TCL. A lot of funding comes from the state to run those schools, and we're letting that talent leave. I think with our economic development, we're going to have to talk about keeping that workforce that we've invested in financially here in Beaufort County. And it's going to trickle. A lot of that's going to come with transparency of where this money is going. A lot of that's going to come with the growth in this community. You talked about it yourself when we talked about the working house force. That is a major issue. A lot of that is going to revolve around that. Until we can solve those issues, that talent's going to leave. I have friends that are teachers that leave day in day out because of a housing issue that we have to tackle. With economic development, the one thing, Beaufort County is busting at seams. We know that. They're, I think Bluffton was the number three town in South Carolina last year. Buckwalter itself is immensely. We just started tearing down the trees in the area over there for Washington Square where we're going to put in some new parks and we're going to put in some shopping complexes, condos, rest, continue to develop Buckwalter around the rest of those housing communities. Those are going to create jobs, more homes, and that's going to be trickles. One of the things that I love to talk to people of just how the way money works sometimes. So I've been at Station 300 for nine now. I've been managing the restaurant stuff for, oh, I think like five and a half. And I've seen people come and go. I've seen the area grow and I've seen it stop growing. When we had Kroger come into that shopping complex, before Kroger, that land sat there for about four years with Southern Barrel came in and then Ace Hardware. That was really it. When Kroger came in there, we've opened up 40 restaurants. We filled the spots that were vacant, that were left before. And now we're already talking about growing the area that's attached to it. We put in the new parks that we need to get open right now. And we've invested our tax dollars in these parks and we need to make sure that they get open as well.
Thank you, Logan. The next topic, Jody, for you would be on growth management. And you live in an area, like Logan mentioned, that is growing leaps and bounds. What would you do to either preserve, protect, accelerate, or stop growth in your opinion?
Well, I don't think anybody would be advocating for stopping growth. You know, there are so many other issues that are tied to growth, but I do think that we need to be a lot more strategic in managing our growth. So what does that really look like? I think for us, you know, again, and I said it at the beginning, the census is going to give us a real opportunity. You know, we have a fresh set of data. I'm a bit of a data nerd, but we'll have that information at our fingertips to really dive into, you know, what industries do we need here? Who's living here now? You know, our demographics have skewed much younger and toward families. So I think that is something that we need to be mindful of. We'll take this information, and I think we need to go back and really dive deep into the strategic plan for the county. You know, the last time we did a strategic plan was 2010. It's been updated a few times, but we really have an opportunity to overhaul the entire strategic plan and really dive into the different areas of the county and how we want to designate the land that we have available. One of the frustrations I know that I have seen myself, and then when I speak with other residents here in District 7 and throughout the county, is that often an area will be designated for, for a specific use, and then a developer comes in and purchases that land and says, you know, I'd really like to develop this into a commercial mixed-use property. Can we change the zoning for that? And then they get county council to change the zoning, and now all of a sudden we've got, you know, an apartment complex or a community development in an area we weren't anticipating that. We also need to be very mindful of the environmental impacts because, you know, if we are damaging our environment, it's going to hurt tourism, it's going to hurt industry here. So we need to be very careful as we manage that as well. So all of these factors are going to go into that. And with that, the county can't be making decisions on their own. They really do need to be looking at each, you know, specific locality like Bluffton, like Port Royal, like Beaufort, like Hilton Head Island, Defuski Island, and, and communicating within those communities. The 278 corridor project is going to be a big part of that as well. You know, how that gets done is going to shape entire communities. And it's not, you know, once it's completed, that's going to be there for a generation. So we really need to get it right.
We have about a minute left, and my lighting keeps changing. I'm in the, I apologize for that. We have about a minute left, and if each of you would just take the next 30 seconds and make a direct plea to voters as to why they should vote for you. Logan will start with you, and then go over to Jody.
Yeah, I'm going to be transparent with all of you. I'm here in this conversation for one reason. I want your votes. I believe I'm the best person for this job. I believe I'm the person that can bridge that gap between county council, school board, and the people. I've been involved in all of it. I've seen what it's like to start from the bottom and try to work your way up. And that's why I'm going to need you guys. So the question I get every single time is, Logan, how do you find the time to run a campaign when you're working full-time, running the restaurant or doing whatever it is? I tell them the same thing every time. When I was in college, I worked 40 to 50 hours a week to pay for my living and make sure I came out debt-free. When I was teaching, when I clocked out at the end of the day, I went right to the restaurant and got to work for another 40 hours during that week. The reason for I tell you guys that is because I believe if you want something bad enough, you have to go get it. You have to go work for it. You have that opportunity in this country to do that. Once I set my mind to something that I want to do, I do it. And I want better schools. I want better roads. I want a better Beaufort County. And I'm the person that's going to get that done. The same thing, I say you come out November 3rd and vote for Logan Cunningham.
Thank you for that, Logan. It was, we've never actually met in person, but so it's interesting for me to get to know you a little bit better. So I would offer this, people make time for the things that are important to them, right? And so that's one of the reasons why I would, you know, stay up late at night talking with teachers in the area, talking with administrators in the area to really understand the needs of our community and why our schools were overcrowded and, and why the funding needs that we had weren't being met from the state or from the local government. It's why I went to meetings sometimes until nine or 10 o'clock at night with small children until, because I didn't have childcare at the time. But I knew it was important and I knew that, you know, the mother who has children with special needs couldn't make it. So I needed to be there to know what's happening, to be their voice. And it's why I put in hours and hours and hours of effort researching and understanding my community and advocating for the school bond referendum, which ultimately passed, you know, with 69% support because now we have all of those beneficial things for the entire community. You know, safer schools, larger buildings, we're going to have better classroom management. All of these things came from that. And it's what's driving me forward. You know, I saw the need and how disconnected the policy decisions were here. And we have a real opportunity, you know, Logan talks about wanting to be the bridge between the county and the school board. I've been doing that for years. I have been doing that actively. And so, and it's not just the school district. I mean, that's one component and it's very important, but we also need to be looking at our state level administrators and legislators and having conversations with them as well, and, and making sure that we have a vision that goes from the top to the county and into the local areas. And I know I have the experience and the dedication to make it happen.
I hope you enjoyed today's conversation. Indeed, it was a good one. We covered a lot of topics in a little bit of time. Before we let you go, just want to mention a couple of upcoming events. Our weekly Teletown Hall broadcasts tomorrow at 9:15. You can sign up to that through a Zoom link. You can just contact us at the Chamber. It's also, I'm sure, on our social media. But also, it is broadcast over the Beaufort County channel, the Beaufort County's Facebook page, and the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber page, Facebook page. The next Lunch with Lawmakers is next Tuesday, and that's going to be with Bill Herbursman and Mitch Siegel for the State House seat, District 118. And then we'd love for you to join us. Something new that we've been doing throughout the COVID pandemic as we continue to social distance is a Chamber Coffee Chat. We would love to hear from you, what your business is up to, network with other folks in your, in your chat rooms. And I know that, like I've heard many people say, you would enjoy the company and the time together. We will post this particular forum on our Facebook page. We would love for you to share that, to get it out to as many voters as possible. And we will look forward to seeing you next Tuesday and then again tomorrow for our Teletown Hall at 9:15. Have a great day, everybody.